Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose the same side. Motion carries. Item F on the agenda this evening is to welcome our guest council member for the month of September. At the invitation of Councilwoman Rothley is Connie Miller. I'm going to add a moment if you have any additional comments to introduce Connie and then give Connie an opportunity to speak as well. Excellent. Connie? Do you have anything further you would like to add Connie?
Excellent. As always, very welcome Connie, we have the opportunity to talk to you today. And after a great discussion, if there's anything not allowed, say your vote. Looking forward to it. Item B is the public hearing on the agenda. There we have the public hearing, we will be at Congress, that's the number one. Cars can either be registered here or in the council members, by calling through the line five zero six. Here 179, we're ready. Item one, this is the big title pitch, the public hearing ordinance.
We did have a public comment that was emailed to me.
You don't need to.
I did have one comment that was emailed to me and in the time that I got the email to now, I must have left it at my desk and I apologize for that, but they were in favor of no fireworks at all.
Let's see if I have that one here. Was that Mr. Michael Austin?
No.
Okay.
It was from an office.
Okay. I did also have one.
The only email communication that I have that was also sent to the entire council was from a Mr. Michael Austin. Quote, "To keep it short, I think fireworks should be banned inside the city limits, but could put up with them on July 4th." End quote for that statement. Any public comments as the public hearing is open at this time? I don't hear the phone ringing, I don't with the situation in the council chambers. I'm going to leave it open, I will begin some discussion with the council at this time. If the phone does happen to ring, we'll address it at the time that it comes in, so. If anybody wants to lead off with anything that they have.
I guess I'll just reiterate my position on this. I would prefer to see a total ban also, but I think the ordinance that we're proposing here is a good compromise. My whole issue is with enforcement and I hope that sometime before the next July 4th holiday, we can have a conversation about with the public service people about how we can do a better job of making sure that people understand what the ordinance is and when they can use fireworks and when they cannot use fireworks and see if we can do a better job of making sure that people obey the law.
I appreciate that Rod and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but from a previous statement you made, it was this wasn't a reflection of the performance of our police department by any means, it's.
Yeah, I think that would be fair, I think enforcement means more than just the police, I think we have to take a look at how we have communicated the ordinance in the past, make sure everybody understands what they can do and make sure they understand what they can't do. You can't, for example, you can't set off fireworks on public property. You can't set off fireworks on other people's property. You can't set off fireworks during hours when it's not permitted to set them off, so. I'm not sure that we've done a particularly good job of communicating that, I think that's one issue. And then another issue is you know, just to have a discussion of maybe some ways that we can figure out in a neighborly way of letting people know when they are you know, not in conformity with the ordinance.
Anyone else?
One thing I would maybe suggest is after this, we go through the second and third reading and it passes, that we maybe throw this on a separate, you know, it could be a study session or whatever, but just really have a good discussion about exactly what Rod said and I think there's also room to communicate to the citizens to really you know, try to get, try to get it funneled into those limited number of days, I think a little bit of effort there or at least a discussion there would definitely be worthwhile.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, I haven't had any phone calls behind me. We'll be able to have some more discussion, but I'll ask for a motion on this at this time.
I'll move to approve the second reading of ordinance 1079 and ordinance remending section 104. Dot four dot zero one fireworks of the Waverly municipal code.
Second.
Motion by Glazer, second by Kangas. And any further council discussion at this time? My city clerk is out of the chambers at this time, so I can't call for a vote at this point in time.
Well, I'd like to offer an amendment to the ordinance under section four. A, to simply a ban of fireworks within the city of Waverly.
I have a motion by, we did get a motion by Glazer, second by Kangas Carla, on the motion as written.
I think it was seconded by Bergen.
I thought it was too.
Oh, okay, I read it back as Kangas, so I didn't get a correction, so thank you for offering that. Second by Bergen, I apologize. And at this time, we have a motion by Kangas to amend this section number four, the limitations. Basically, motion to ban the discharge of considering fireworks within the city of Waverly.
Thank you.
I guess I just, it's, that seems to be the direction that it's been heading all along, there's a lot of comments in that direction. And to get to kind of Rod's point, I don't know that it's it's confusing enough for people as it is to try to fit in all the little details where they can and where they can't and whatnot, and it's just easier to say, you can't do it. That's much easier to enforce.
Tim, have you been hearing from a lot of citizens that want them banned? Because other than Mr. Austin, I haven't heard from anyone lately.
Well, throughout, throughout in July and when we had it and June and into July and then even previous years, I just, I think it's kind of that's the general mood. And I haven't heard a lot of people coming out to really urge to keep it.
I would say the majority of comments that I heard after this 4th of July holiday were that it needed to be shortened dramatically. I did hear from some people that wanted it banned, a few people who wanted it left alone. And so I was going to agree with Rod's comments earlier about that this might be a a good compromise to leave it at three days, but I haven't heard a ground swell either way in the last month or so.
I have to agree with and that I have not heard many people, other than one or two people, say they want it banned. I've heard some people being willing to compromise, but a lot of people saying no, this is, this is going to be, this is already confusing enough when it doesn't match the state, so. I mean, I agree, Tim, that it is confusing and you know, it just would be easier to enforce if we just had a ban, but I really don't think we should base that off of this year because everything was canceled this year and I, I believe I read somewhere that somebody's saying in the council, I can't remember who, maybe we should give it another year to see what happens and this is, this is just a different year with no fireworks, everything being canceled and I, and I think it was probably exaggerated this year. So I really don't think we should go base off of this year.
Point of order, do we actually have a second to the proposed amendment?
No, we do not.
Okay, well unless we have a second for the proposed amendment, we really shouldn't be discussing the proposed amendment.
It falls under general or what, what order do you have there Carla?
I, I thought that Tim had made the, the.
He had made.
He made the proposed amendment, but you need a second on a proposed amendment, I believe.
There has not been a second, I thought he had seconded.
No, I have seconded the original motion.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm seeing that as falling under general discussion and giving an opportunity for anybody to hear which way they want to go, if somebody wanted to second Councilman Kangas's amendment.
I simply offered, offered my amendment and then offered my rationale for it, so.
I'm going to.
People discuss that.
I'm going to second Tim's amendment because I think that it's important for us to get a vote on the record on this. Except I'm, I'm going to vote no on it, not because I don't think that it is the route we should go, but I'm willing to give this three day window, a couple of years. And if we still have the problems that we've had in the past, then I think that, you know, that, that tells us that we cannot have as, as Brian says, this is why we can't have nice shiny things. People don't behave themselves, the next year or two, this is going to come up again and we simply ban it, so this is putting everybody on notice that, you know, if they don't comply with what the law is, this is going to be taken away from them.
Okay, with that Rod, we do have a motion and a second on the amendment, I need to have a vote to approve.
Well, we should, we should first discuss the proposed amendment before we vote on the proposed amendment.
We're just approving the, the proposed amendment to be discussed, isn't that?
No, once it's seconded, it goes into discussion of that second.
I, I would have to agree with Rod that while I think it's valuable to discuss this, I'm not ready for an outright ban yet. I think, I mean, I, I understand Tim's concern and I know that he voiced it when we first discussed the fireworks ordinance, that it was kind of a slow slide towards a ban that we would eventually get to, that he believed, that we kind of started with, you know, two weeks and then maybe it would be one week and then three days and then two days and one days and a ban and he I think effectively argued that we should either allow it or ban it and this kind of slow slide towards a ban wasn't a good situation. Now, I think we've gone from two weeks, we did that for three years and I think that we had a lot more fireworks and it was really impeded on a lot of people's well-being. I think two weeks was really a burden on our pet owners and our people with PTSD and I think that was too much. But I don't think an outright ban is the next step. I think we should try a three day window. I honestly would, I personally think we should do a three day window, we should give it another three years, just like we did the, the two weeks and then at that point, see how it is. I also don't like the idea of selling fireworks in town and then not allowing people to light them off. Now, I realize that that's a state law and we have no control over that, but I still chafe at the idea of encouraging our citizens to be lawbreakers by selling something in town they're not allowed to use. So I, I'm with Rod that I'm not ready to vote for a complete ban just yet.
Yes, ma'am.
If I might as well, I did forward that email to mayor and council and the email I spoke of earlier was from Renee Lloyd.
So on this, hang on a second, I'm, okay, so this would fall under the public hearing portion of this and since it was noted earlier, the request was to read this at the council meeting, so I will entertain that as such. We would be extremely happy if we had a total fireworks ban in Waverly. In the city, houses are just too close for such dangerous activity, we are not alone in the fear that our house will catch on fire. This past season sounded like a war zone and we feel 15 days is far too long for people that are adversely affected by this. To be fair to everyone, we feel two or three days is plenty, the safest option would be for the city to put on a fireworks display by licensed professionals. That way those adversely affected could plan accordingly, sincerely Tom and Renee Lloyd, 1803 Horton Road.
My apologies for that.
That's okay, we got it. Any further discussion on the amendment for a ban?
Yeah, I just kind of, Brian, Brian kind of summed it up, but I was, when it originally came out, the fireworks were permitted in the state. I was of the opinion that we should just allow state law. I thought that to me made the most sense, it kept when they were being sold and when they could be used pretty clear for the public as opposed to trying to figure out this town or this town or that town, whatever. But on the other hand, if, if it is going to be restricted, again, my biggest concern with any ordinance that we passed is enforceability. And I just worry that trying to set shorter parameters and, and then trying to educate the public, we can put as much out as we want. Whether they follow that or not, I mean, we put speed limit signs out, that doesn't necessarily mean anything to the public, so, always, so. Just from an enforceability standpoint, that's, that's why I would say go on this route, this route.
Any further discussion, otherwise I will call for roll call vote at this time. Seeing nobody, we will vote on the amended ordinance change regarding an entire ban. Carla?
Go four.
No.
Bergen?
No.
Drinkow?
No.
Glazer?
No.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
No.
Schneider?
No.
On a vote of six to one, the nays have it on this proposed ordinance change of the amended ordinance change. So this brings us back to the original amendment or the original proposed approving the second reading of ordinance 1079 amending section 104.401 fireworks of the Waverly city code is presented in the council packet. To, on July 3rd and July 5th between the hours of noon and 10:00 PM and on July 4th between the hours of noon and 11:00 PM. No changes for the December 31st window. Any further discussion there? Hearing none, roll call vote Carla.
Schneider?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Kangas?
No.
Glazer?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Go four.
No.
On a vote of five to three, five yes to, two no, sorry. Five yes, two Five yes, two no, the second reading is approved of ordinance 1079. Moving forward to the consent calendar, item H, the following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion. Unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item one, approve a change order to the owner occupied rehabilitation contract. For project number one of the Waverly CDBG housing rehabilitation program for an increase of $4,450. Item two is set the public hearing date for October 19th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. In the council chambers of city hall to review the old WPC dome demolition 2020 project. Plan specifications, form of contract and estimated cost. Item three, set the public hearing date for October 5th, 2020 at 7:00 PM in council chambers of city hall. For the construction of South Riverside Shelter and Plaza. Item four is a pay request from Farnsworth Group for the Public Services Center North Edition 2021 for the amount of $44,113.20. Item five is a pay request from WHKS and company for the WPC facility improvements 2020. For the amount of $28,224.96. Item six is a pay request from WHKS and company for the Adams Parkway Bridge Sanitary Sewer. Force maintenance, inspection and repair 2020 for the amount of $139.84. Item seven is a pay request from WHKS and company for the old WPC dome demolition 2020 for the amount of $707.52. Item eight is a pay request from WHKS and company for the Third Street Southeast Bridge removal for the amount of $1,529.4. Item nine is a pay request from Chicago Central and Pacific for the 20th Street Northwest Reconstruction. Railroad crossing improvements at 20th Street Northwest 2018 for the amount of $250. Item 10 is a pay request from Heartland Asphalt Incorporated for the Business 218 North Resurfacing 2020 for the amount of $726,562.69. Item 11 is pay request from Hall and Hall Engineers Incorporated for the Youth Ballfields 2019 Cedar River Park. For the amount of $21,392.25. Item 12 is a pay request from Maymark Tyling Incorporated for the Cedar River Park Bid Package One Grading and Utility Installation. For the amount of $154,181.29. Item 13 is a pay request from Schneider and Associates. For the traffic study 2020 for the amount of $2,976. Item 14 is a pay request from Licks Construction Incorporated for the Fourth Street Southwest and 10th Street Southwest Improvements. 2020 for the amount of $1,113,160.37. Item 15 is pay request from Baker Enterprises for the 20th Street Northwest Improvements 2020. For the amount of $303,571.5. Item 16 is a pay request from Stagie Construction Incorporated for the Harlington Cemetery Storage Building Project for the amount of $12,018. Item 17 is a Class C liquor license for the Other Place Two. Seek a motion to approve the consent calendar is read.
I'll move to approve.
Consent calendar is read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Drinkow. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign? Motion carries.
I, I have one question about that. Is, is there a target date when the traffic study is going to be presented to the council?
Apparently the traffic study has been completed yet. I think the part they've done is the inventory part of the traffic signals, but I don't think they've done any traffic yet.
Okay. And I, I know that the whole COVID thing kind of threw, threw everything off. I wasn't sure if we were getting to the end of that, if we were going to be getting a report anytime soon.
Uh, the biggest problem as we'd stated was trying to get, uh, Wortburg and the schools all back in session at one time. So traffic normalized. Unfortunately, Fourth Street being the arterial it really is coming through the middle of town. Once that is done. Then we can get those counts. And so you're probably looking at late November, early December to have this done. And, uh, like you said, COVID definitely threw a wrench into this.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Brad, for clarifying. Item I, regular business, number one, resolution 20 dash 145, a resolution adopting the 2020. Housing needs assessment prepared by the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments. Seek a motion, please.
I will move approval of resolution 20 dash 145, adopting the 2020 housing needs assessment prepared by the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie, any discussion? Or explanation?
No, we've got a lot of business to do tonight, so I don't want to drag this out, but, um, I started reading the. 98 page report, I think it was. It got through about the first 30 or 40 pages. I'm, I'm hoping that when we do our councils. Planning sessions, uh, if, if we do them yet this year, that this might be one of the things that we want to. Look at a little bit more deeply and discuss at that time.
We do plan to try and give some kind of a summary at that point. I know it's a lot to read. We just broke a hundred pages. Tried to stay right under that for you, but, um, it is a lot to try and absorb, a lot of detail, a lot of data. I know, uh, Rose Phillips is on from InterCog and so maybe she would like to speak to how the project was done. Kind of the outcome, any questions you might have. I'm certain that she can answer them. If you'd allow that, Mayor, I'd ask that Rose, uh, have a chance to talk here.
Yeah, absolutely. I think anybody from the library would agree, Rod, that a book under a hundred pages is a short read. But, uh, Rose, go ahead. If you, if you have anything you'd like to add.
All right. Well, the, the first 20 pages or so was, uh, just kind of a demographic and economic overview just to provide a baseline of. What kinds of individuals and families live in the community? What, what kinds of jobs do people hold? Where are they, are they commuting from or to? And so then it gets deeper into the housing data and. So it, it's a mix of both publicly available census and American community survey data and also local data, including, um. Including multiple listing service data on home sales and, and also local feedback from employers, real estate professionals, landlords. And, and so there were, there are some elements of the report where, you know, where we dove in more deeply and spent. More length on, you know, particularly on that local data. So for instance, uh. At first blush, the multiple listing service seems to show that Waverly has a. A softer housing market than some other comparison cities. But then if you dig deeper and, and you parse those numbers by. The year the home was built, uh, by its price range, by, you know, whether it's a single family or condo, you see that. There are certain subsets of homes of modest or starter homes that are, you know, that actually sell pretty quickly. And so that, you know, that deeper longitudinal analysis allowed us to identify a, a market opportunity. You know, where, where demand is versus where. You know, versus what the market is supplying. Uh, another, uh, another segment where, you know, it kind of got into the weeds was, um. Look, looking at, uh, the city's rental housing supply and some. And also demand for affordable housing. So the, I mean, the city's had a lot of rental construction since the last housing needs assessment was produced and. But, uh, remarkably that has, does not appear to have. Flooded the market. Um, so it, you know, so I, we took some time to demonstrate that there is, there is still rental demand. Um, both, both for market rate rentals and certainly for, uh, below market rate rentals. Um. And, and one of, one of the kind of distinctive things about Waverly's. How rental housing market and it's not. I mean, it's not that unusual in a community with relatively low rental costs. Um, they're. So developments with, uh, shallow rental subsidies. They're, the units aren't necess, you know, they might be comparable in cost or even costlier than some of the modest. Unsubsidized units, and yet there's still strong demand for them, probably because they're new units of higher quality. And so it's kind of a complex situation where. You know, I, I kind of laid out that the city would want to tread, you know, be careful in. In providing support for developers, getting those subsidies to ensure that there really is demand, but that, yes, the demand is there, that even though. Waverly has a lot of modest market rate rental units, there still are several, you know, at least several dozen. Households of all types in the community that, that are still looking for rental housing. And so we also provided a, a series of recommendations, I mean, which aren't binding. If the city approves the document, they're, you know, they're just advisory recommendations, just, you know, just to consider. Um, about, about ways to expand. Um, uh, some, some of those housing options that are maybe being undersupplied in the current market. And so those might mean partnering with a, with an employer to. To provide a, you know, say a home rehabilitation fund or, you know, just a, just a variety of options to. Expand resources out there. And ultimately it's up to the city to, to weigh, you know. Should, you know, should we expand our, our own resources or should we, you know, kind of. Keep, keep on course with the, the option, you know, the measures we've taken so far, such as, you know, modifications to the zoning code, um. Existing tax abatements. And so forth. Um, so some of that length is actually from appendices. So for instance, when I received feedback from. Real estate professionals and, and landlords and others, I, you know, some of that open ended feedback, I, you know, I just put it in appendix so that it wouldn't be in the main report. So I would recommend as a starting point, reading the, the two page summary, um, the executive summary. And then I have a narrative summary and conclusion sections, you know, that, that tries to boil it down into a, into a story.
What struck me as I was reading through this was the conclusion that we are, um. That there, we're not meeting our demand for moderately priced housing in Waverly. And that we should be looking at some ways to be able to provide that, that basic. Or moderately priced housing. Then people want to, uh, more expensive housing. And I, I think that we need to have a discussion as a council as to just what the role of the city is. In encouraging that and what specific actions or. Recommendations that you provide in, in the, uh. Report and what specific actions we really want to undertake. That's probably not something we want to do at a regular council meeting.
Right.
Do something at a, at a study session. And I would suggest maybe even at, uh, at a, at a planning session.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I mean, we, you know, we can be there to facilitate that discussion.
Might be helpful to have the Economic Development Commission. Um, involved in that discussion too.
I think that would be an interesting discussion to have to kind of, you know, add on to that. I did, um. Read this study, I think the Economic Development Commission got it a, a bit earlier. I. Read it some time ago because I, I'm trying to even decipher my notes now from, uh, from, from when I read it. Um. I, I do think that to add on to the discussion, I think that we do need to at some point. Um, have a discussion about looking for every way or everything possible to, uh, reduce costs for builders. And encourage more builders to come in. I think that would be an important thing. I think there, there was, uh, well, looking at my notes here, I, I. Made a note that there was an oversupply of expensive homes and it could be a future problem. And I don't know if the study said that verbatim or if I made notes of that, but, um. I, I guess what I would say to that, I, I'm, you know, I, I think that problem will be fixed pretty soon here with the. Uh, you know, this study was done pre-COVID, so, um. There will be a few things changing, I'm sure, so.
Yeah, I don't know. Oh.
I was gonna say, I just, I appreciate all the information that was in this report. I mean, like so many other people, I think I was overwhelmed by the amount of information that's in here. Um, I definitely think, uh, when we talk about the need for affordable housing. That should really be tied into the problems that our businesses have finding sufficient workers. Um, if they can't find housing in Waverly, it's hard to find workers in Waverly. So that's, um, one of the, the driving forces behind the need. For affordable housing in Waverly. And I think it's just something we have to keep in the forefront of our mind when we read a report like this.
Right. I do, there is a community, um, I, I can't remember which community off the top of my head, but I know there's one where they. A city partnered with Hy-Vee, uh, to, to establish a program to assist. The local workforce, uh, with housing options. Um, and, and so there are possibilities. I mean, there are. You know, there are way, you know, understanding that the city doesn't have unlimited funds or, you know, un. In unlimited ability to, to raise funds through property taxes. I mean, there, there are other ways to, to raise that revenue.
I did have a question that I don't know if anyone can answer. I have a note here that median rent in Waverly was 648 and it's 740 statewide. I was. That, that stood out as being a bit curious to me and I'm sure there's a logical reason for that.
No, it's, it's hard to know exactly how much that's changed since some new housing has come online in the last three years. Um. Cause I, I'm, I'm trying to think about close to 200 new units have come online and of those. Little over 170 or, you know, or maybe closer to 180 are, they're not restricted to. People over a certain age. So I mean, that will likely, you know, in, in the next census or the next American community survey, that will likely. Drive that median rent up, but I mean, until, so what it tells us is until a lot of this new rental housing came online. I mean, Waverly had a lot of older unsubsidized, but still moderately priced units. And so, I mean, the upside is those are relatively affordable. The downside that the 2014. Assessment identified was that they, they don't meet the kind of. The desires, you know, the, the level of amenity that a lot of renters in the region are looking for. And so. A lot of renters are renting, were renting elsewhere, but now more of them appear to be coming to Waverly since that rental stock that they desire is there. Oh, it's, I mean, it's, that's the tricky thing about a rental market is, you know, there, there's so many different. You know, it's fractured into a, a lot of different components. So. I mean, you know, you need to have the lower cost rentals for, you know, for those with lower incomes, um. The high, you know, the higher cost rentals or, you know, even, even some of the more moderately priced. Rentals that are professionally managed. They might have screening criteria where someone, you know. A low income person might not be able to get into that, that rental development if, you know, if say they have a credit issue or something. So, no, so that's why, why you need a range, you know, of. Or units in different price ranges, um, you know, all, all decent and safe, but different amenity levels, um, some with subsidies, some without. And, and subsidized units also play an important role. They, they provide an important resource for people with vouchers because. People with vouchers, they can't find units that would rent up above a certain level. In the private market and they need to find landlords who are willing to rent to them. So. So I guess the message is I, you know, it's. You know, is diversify. I mean, always, you know, always be open to diversifying the rental portfolio.
A question, um, for Heather, I guess, since you're on the task force for diversity. Has this issue come up at all there with. Housing needs for people of color, people with disabilities or mental health problems who, as Rose was saying, might have. You know, credit dues from their past or anything that get in the way.
Housing has not come up, um, actually, no.
I would add that, um, uh, in the next, uh, meeting of the economic development next month. We are planning to try to introduce some housing, uh, questions just like this. Especially related to, uh, property that the city owns. And so if we can do that, we'll get, we'll start that discussion going and that can carry into the, uh, council having that same discussion.
All right. If that is the conclusion of the discussion, I'll thank, uh, Ms. Phillips for joining us. And giving that, uh, insight and information. I appreciate that. And with that, we'll go with the roll call vote Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Cangus.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Vote four?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero with zero absent, Resolution 20 dash 145 is approved. Item two is Resolution 20 dash 135, Resolution approving a preliminary plat for residential development for the proposed Walnut Ridge subdivision on property located off of 12th Street Northeast. Seek a motion, please.
I'll move approval of Resolution 20 dash 135 approving a preliminary plat for J C L J Ventures LLC for residential development to consist of four total lots for the proposed Walnut Ridge subdivision on property located off 12th Street Northeast.
I'll second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Glazer. Council discussion, please. Hearing none?
We're wasting no time with that housing study. It was getting right going. Lots going right away.
There you go. Hearing no discussion, we'll go right to a vote Carla.
Kangas?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Vote four?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero with zero absent, Resolution 20 dash 135 is approved. Item number three is Resolution 20 dash 144. A resolution approving the designation of two parking spaces in the City of Waverly parking lot at the corner of First Avenue and Third Street Southeast for EV charging stations. Seek a motion.
I would move approval of Resolution 20 144 approving the installation of charging stations in two public spa, parking spaces.
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Bergen. Council discussion, please.
I just wanted to state that I felt that this, um, resolution was very forward-thinking and I think this is a great idea because I think we're gonna find this, uh, more and more going forward.
I would agree. Um, I know that, and I guess I'm the only one on the council that took part in when we hired James. Um, we did the, uh, admin, search for the new city administrator. Uh, one of the candidates talked about having put in, uh, charging stations when they did a downtown streetscape project, uh, in their downtown square. And I remember thinking about that, that ever brought it up for the, with the Bremer Avenue one, simply because A, it's a state highway, uh, and B, I knew we had the city lots, um, behind that would be possible good locations for something like this if we, if it came to the point of, of doing something like this. Um, I think they're gonna become more and more common. Uh, and I don't think these are gonna be the last two that we put in.
I have to forgive me. I don't know a whole lot about the charging stations, but I'm assuming the electricity um, that will be used here is going to be provided gratis or is this some kind of a, a metered uh, piece of equipment?
Yeah, I, I can take that question for you, Rodney. Um, the electricity that's sold through the EV charger is a metered, um, source of, of power to the, anybody that's using the, the EV charging station. Um, we have yet to set the dollar amount, but it would be something where, um, there would be a, a fee that the consumer would pay when they charge their vehicle. Uh, they do that through a couple of means. Um, the application or an app that is either built into the automobile or the customer that has on their phone. Uh, they can pay for the electricity used through that means or by swiping a credit card at the, at the EV charging station itself.
And Kurt, that revenue goes where? I, I guess I missed that whole piece in this.
Yeah, there's really, it's, it's a revenue neutral. Um, we're not looking at really, this isn't, uh, a, a money-making venture for Waverly Utilities by any means. Um, the, there's obviously annual maintenance and support fees that are behind it that the utility has to pick up. Um, the, well, the winning bid of the, for the project was a company called ChargePoint. Um, ChargePoint actually does all of the, the billing to the customers. Um, where we set the electric rate, um, after the fees are paid and that, it comes back to the utility. Um, basically based on the usage, uh, how many vehicles might be there, we use it on a monthly basis.
And the grant came in through the Department of Transportation. Um, and do we know, do we have any idea what, uh, maintenance, annual maintenance, I mean, it can't be that much, can it? I mean,
Uh, yeah, that actually, I, I have those numbers here, um, Matt. The, uh, um, annual maintenance, um, for the, there's two parts of the maintenance. It's a EV maintenance and support and then the commercial cloud support, um, that's paid on an annual basis. Uh, roughly runs about $1,300 a year, uh, for both of those.
And this is one of those cases where the city's not spending money. You're just simply giving permission to do these things as a, um, a city entity, like much in like the same way as the hospital because you kind of have our permission to exist within the city. You also need our permission to do these kind of expenditures. Am I correct?
Um, yeah, not necessarily. And, and this particular project is, um, when we did the, the study in the last year and a half, um, through DGR Engineering, um, is because the, the city or the parking lot is owned by the City of Waverly, um, so we're asking permission to utilize two of those spaces for the EV charging station.
Okay.
And I, I'm going back to one of Matt's questions about how the DOT is involved with it. Uh, the Department of Transportation is overseeing the distribution of funds from the Volkswagen settlement, um, where the Volkswagen was basically found guilty of, uh, cheating on their emission standards on their diesel vehicles here in the United States or globally. Um, that part of their settlement was to build a, uh, electric vehicle charging network across the country. And that money is distributed to the state on an annual basis where utilities, even private companies, uh, can apply for this grant money through the DOT. Um, so really, there's really no taxpayer money towards it. It's, it's really just a, um, a grant from Volt, the Volkswagen settlement, so.
So, so in essence, you're just asking us for permission to use these two parking spaces?
Exactly. I, I'm asking permission to paint two parking spaces green. Yeah, but the little, I think I sent out a, uh, it should have been an aerial view with a couple of pictures of what the parking space looked like that signifies or, uh, that it's an EV spa, parking space. Um, that's basically what I'm asking for permission for tonight.
And punch a couple of holes in the parking lot, too.
Well, no, not, no, not, not the parking lot, but a little ballpark right in front of it, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, but yes, you're absolutely correct, Brian. The utility is, uh, responsible for putting the infrastructure in. Uh, while there is some infrastructure, electrical infrastructure there now that we'll be, um, utilizing, uh, but we'll have a little bit more work to do with the transformer and then the actual mounting of the, uh, charging station itself.
We put a USB in there so we get like a three-second cell phone charge? Is that possible?
I don't know if that, no, that's not the deck of cards.
I'd throw it out there.
So the maintenance is covered by this grant too or no? Who pays the maintenance?
Uh, okay, so Waverly Utilities in the long term, uh, but part of the grant, uh, requires the EV charging, charging station needs to be in operation for five years. Um, they require that to be in place and in operation. Um, the grant will pay for the first year of maintenance and cloud support, but thereafter the utility would have to pay that.
I'm, I think this is well-intentioned and I'm huge on solar and I think we need to think, however, I think we need to think a lot bigger about solar. I'm gonna vote no on this because I, I think this is exactly what is wrong with government. I think you have the DOT taking, um, uh, allotting these funds and we're, we're essentially removing parking spaces from downtown, which has been a complete streets mission for a long, long time. I have a big concern about that. I have a concern that this is not the way the market is going, that, um, that for, well, the market is going this way, but government is, is so far out of, of left field on this that they're gonna sit empty because we haven't listened to market signals on this. Um, I don't think it's the end of, and, and the world, but we're gonna waste two parking spaces and we're going to, uh, pass, uh, dollars onto, onto ratepayers. So I'll, I'll be voting no on this.
But I do wonder if more people would buy electric vehicles if there were more places to charge them as they were traveling. You know, a lot of hotels now set aside parking spaces for electric vehicles and certainly in the parking lot at the hospital routinely there are two or three electric vehicles there. Um, so I think all we're being asked to do tonight is to, as Kurt said, give permission for two parking spaces and, um, I've not seen that back parking lot full a lot of the time. I wish it would be all the time because that means people are down there shopping. Um, but I think it would be a, a good gesture and, and hopefully they'll get used.
I just had one question. Maybe you, uh, can answer this Kurt, is what has the usage been of the ones out at Kuna? Or have they shared any data there?
They, they do. Actually, we have one of our, our, uh, Public Utilities Board trustees, uh, works at Kuna. Uh, that's a question that has come up. Um, I believe their EV charging stations went into service pre-COVID, just shortly before COVID hit. And obviously I think Kuna is still working from home, so I don't think they got, I don't think they got a lot of use in this last year.
Fair enough. No different than if these were installed prior to COVID and we were asking for an update on their use. You're right. You're kind of right in line with the traffic study, so.
Yep, exactly.
Has there been any conversation with the owners of the Cobblestone Inn in terms of are they in favor of it, indifferent to it, uh, opposed? I mean, I would imagine that a lot of people staying at the Cobblestone Inn, if they're driving electric vehicles, would take advantage of the charging.
Yeah. Um, I have not personally been in contact with Cobblestone Inn, um, some for the fact that part of the grant and also going back to our DGR Engineering study, um, it was in the city lot there. I know it's in proximity with Cobblestone and I don't know if they have still over parking there or what. Um, but no, I've not had conversations with Cobblestone.
It's my, it's my understanding that the, uh, that this is becoming pretty popular and that there's, um, apps that you can find, uh, places that have them, towns that have them. Um, and it especially helps with people just passing through and, and, and they plan for their trip to stop so they can eat or do whatever they're doing while they're charging. So it, it does kind of promote the downtown somewhat to, to have them in, in the downtown area.
Yeah, we would actually, um, because the, the project is approved, uh, we would apply, it's called PlugShare. It's a, a nationally recognized EV charging network. Uh, when you go to their, their website, the map of the United States pulls up and it's got all the dots all over the country. Um, you zoom down, down to Iowa, it'll show you all the EV charging stations that are registered on that site. Um, that's a, that's a resource that EV vehicle owners use to locate charging stations when they're doing their trips. Um, so yeah, Waverly would be recognized on a website similar to that, same way as the ChargePoint.
So in the future, we're gonna need like 10 million of these across the country, probably in a short amount of time. And so I think it's worth at least thinking about, you know, that's, to divide out, um, this is real rough math here. Uh, Brian, math check me please. Uh, so we got 10 million divided by 50, divided by 99. You know, you're probably just shy of what, 2,000 per county? That's if Bremer's an average county, which it is, we're a pretty average county. So are we gonna have 2,000 of these up and down Bremer Avenue? Um, and, and how are we gonna, I, I just think that probably a good time to think about this. It seems, um, that seems like that could be a messy situation in the future. That, you know, is it even government's role to do that? I mean, when I've seen these, I've seen, you know, 24-hour truck stops and big, huge, long bays where people are using them.
Yeah, and, and Matt, you'll, you'll see probably a majority of those charging stations are gonna be in customers' homes. Uh, you know, there's, there's three different levels of charging stations on the market right now. There's a level one, a level two and a level three. Waverly Utilities is proposing a level two charger. A level one charger is, would be probably equivalent to like a, an outlet in your garage, a 240-volt outlet. It's a very slow triple charge. And so when you talk about the number of vehicles that'll be hitting the roads and the use that those vehicles have, I kind of envision the vehicles coming home at the end of the workday. People in the garage, they plug them in overnight and charge them up. The level two chargers are more designed for your, your commuting, your travelers. So in this instance where you come in and, and every vehicle battery is different, but on, let's just say the average uh, EV vehicle on the roadway today, um, if you plug the vehicle in for an hour at a level two charger, you're gonna get probably anywhere from a 25 to 70 mile range if you're, if you're running low, you know, on a battery charge. Um, level three chargers, uh, you mentioned truck stops. You're starting to see those starting to pop up at those locations. And the level three charger is a very fast charger. Uh, you could go from a half-charge on a battery pack and have top it off in maybe about a 40-minute window. Um, so, yeah, I'm not envisioning, you know, lining the streets with EV chargers because realistically, most of those vehicles are gonna get and be charged sitting in the, in the garage stalls or the parking spots at their homes. And this is to really kind of accommodate those travelers that are on the roadway. That's really kind of what made unique, unique to Waverly here where we're kind of sandwich between Highway 218 and 63 where, uh, we might pick up, uh, some members from outside the community that are, you know, crossing the state.
So when I'm reading, we need all these charge ports, the, the majority of those is in-home, is where they have to get it converted and, and and have a, a port installed there, correct?
Exactly. Yep, exactly. And most homes can accommodate a level one charger. Um, that's like I said, it's basically equivalent to a 200, 240-volt outlet that your, your central air conditioner runs off of. So it, it's not a, a huge load factor. Uh, now, you know, when we look at it as a utility standpoint, um, you start to see, you know, neighborhoods popping up and everybody's putting EV chargers in. Well, then that, that's something that the utility has to account for than for when we size transformers and distribution lines and things like that. But, um, I, I, I do see your point. I, I do think we're probably a few years away from that, um, particularly in rural Iowa where we're at, but.
And I know you guys are having conversations at the utility about getting every, you know, infrastructure ready for vehicles.
Yeah, yeah, most definitely.
Well, I really am, am intrigued at the idea of this helping downtown where people, if they're driving through and they're timing a, where do I want to stop for lunch and saying, oh, here's a place where I could stop, park my car, charge it for an hour while I get some lunch in downtown. Um, or, you know, walk a little bit around downtown, shop a little bit while the car is charging. That sounds like a, a boon for downtown development.
I would agree. All right. Thank you Kurt for joining us this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Helping us through this. Um, this time I'll go the roll call vote Carla.
Glazer?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Vote four?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
Raffi?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
On a vote of six to one with zero absent, Resolution 20 dash 144 is approved. Item number four is Resolution 20 dash 136, a resolution approving Gerald Wooden's additional facade reimbursement request. Seek a motion, please.
I will move, I will move approval of Resolution 20 dash 136 approving an additional facade reimbursement request to Gerald Wooden in the amount of $3,000 for facade improvements completed on the building at 203 East Bremer Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Glazer. Council discussion.
It looked like this was just a matter of getting extra receipts turned in to get the maximum amount of reimbursement. Is that correct?
His oversight, he forgot, um, to submit one of them when he submitted them to us the first time. It was all planned from the beginning.
All right. Thank you for that clarification, Bill. Roll call Carla.
I thought I did that. Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Vote four?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero with zero absent, Resolution 20 dash 136 is approved. Item number five is Resolution 20 dash 137, a resolution approving contract change order and payment of contract amount less 5% retainage until completion of items in the spring of 2021 for the Waverly Streetscape Tree Project 2020. Seek a motion, please.
I'll move approval of Resolution 20 dash 137 approving contract change order in the I'll move approval of resolution 20 dash 137 approving contract change order in the amount of an increase of $22,666.56 and contract payment was $78,950 less $3,947.50. Uh, 5% retainage to Wells Hollow Landscaping of Waverly Iowa for the Waverly Streetscape Tree Project 2020 for the total amount of $97,669.06.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Raffi, council discussion.
Um, can someone explain what happened here that all of these pipe were going under where we were planning to put trees in? I don't know. It, it sounds like somebody made a mistake and I'm kind of curious who it was.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you that, um, we expected that most of that space would be clear. Um, based on the project, uh, the, the way we understood it when they planned for, um, doing the highway three, uh, Bremer Avenue. I think what happened is you had so many moving parts going on that when the, the, the concrete guys were trying to get in there to put in sidewalk and when they were putting in sidewalk, they were doing sidewalk and then not doing the strip where the bricks were. And then guys would come in to do the, uh, the power cables and the things that they wanted to put in. And it was a lot easier to put it in the gravel than it was, um, where the concrete had already been placed. I think it was just an easy thing for them to do. And so that's ended up what happened apparently because we were told there'd be occasional one or two, uh, most of them would be off to the side. It's not the way it ended up. Um, it, they were all over the place. They, most of those pits had to be hand dug instead of being dug by a machine. If you had one in there, you can, you can scoop around it, but if you have three or four or five of them, you're in there in the pit with your, with your shovels and, and buckets and pulling things out of there. So I, it was just a, I, I'm not sure why it happened that way because I, I thought that was pretty clear, but it, it's the way we found it when we opened them up. So 16 of the 19 had a lot of difficulty, uh, being dug. You could tell how easy it was when you knew that when they weren't in there because those went very fast. Um, so we know that the hours were legit. You could compare the, the pits without the, the conduits with the pits that had lots of conduits. And it was substantial amount more labor and, and work to do it.
So this would be a case of the contractors who were putting those in when we did the road reconstruction, not doing it to approved specification?
Well, I don't know if they had specified exactly where they went under the sidewalk. Because if that would have been all sidewalk, they would have been just putting them anywhere along the sidewalk, um, underneath. And I, I get, like I said, having that opening where the, where the bricks were going to go in, it was just easier when contractors came, when the different contractors came, because you think of the different ones that were there doing their, putting their conduits in, uh, the utility providers, um, uh, different utility providers at different times. It, it, it just, there's a lot of different things that are underneath that, that concrete. And it was a lot easier to put under the bricks.
Well, but then again, weren't, weren't we telling people that we wanted it under the bricks so we could easily pull up the bricks to get at those conduits to work on them? I mean, may, maybe now I'm, I'm not remembering if that was in the plan or not.
Well, we had a plan for the streetscape that actually included, um, showing where those lines should be, should be kept, you know, where the, where the conduits should be to avoid, um, interference with the things that would go in that brick strip. Now, the, the process we did use would anticipate some of that, would anticipate some of those, um, conduits. Because that's, they were designed to, to accommodate those at different levels. But it wasn't the multiple ones that we ended up facing. It, it would have been something we would have come back. It, it just was a very difficult, um, thing to know since we weren't there every day to watch and see what ended up underneath those bricks.
So this may be a dumb question, but now that we've put this giant tree root ball down, all the conduit and this tree starts to grow, are we going to have trouble if we ever need to replace some of those utility lines? Because now we've got roots all around them?
The, you, you could see the, the squares in the one picture that was, was in there. Um, they looked like, like milk cartons or milk, milk, um, boxes. And they had, um, areas in them to put the conduits and things. So it's supposed to work so that they're, they accommodate both, that, that the conduits go through, but you can, you can put soil within those, those box structures. And that's where the, 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 uh, roots would, would take root in those areas. And that's why we dug up, uh, 12 feet of, um, of length for each particular tree because they can have, they, they kind of go horizontally as opposed to straight down. And the root ball is basically that square that, that's where the, that's where the tree starts. And the dirt on each side will be available for those tree roots to travel in and around those things. And yeah, we, we could have some problems if there was some major things that had to be done with, uh, different conduits and find them and, and, and deal with them. Um, but we would always have that issue underneath the concrete.
That system was developed to be put into city streets with a lot more action in that area than we normally have. Multiple levels of concrete. We saw photos of 15, 20 different pieces of concrete, gas line, you name it. That's built to do that in the city specifically. It's why we chose that model. Uh, and so the trees, as Bill said, grow over and around it, not through it. And that's how it was developed. So this is built for inner city and a lot more than what we have current. It was just more than what we anticipated to.
The additional cost is not putting us outside of our budget. In fact, we're well within our budget. Uh, especially given that we got the $25,000 grant from, um, the Railroad American Bloom. So it, it, it isn't putting us, it isn't compromising and increasing the cost of the entire streetscape.
All right. Hearing no further discussion at this time. We have a motion and a second. Have a roll call vote Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Oh four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Out of votes seven to zero, zero absent, resolution 20 dash 137 is approved. Item six is resolution 20 dash 138. A resolution approving a contract with Green Image Landscapes for Streetscape Display on the Four Queens Corner. Seek a motion, please.
I'll move approval of resolution 20 dash 138 approving a contract with Green Image Landscapes at Waverly Iowa for $7,988.98 for streetscape, streetscape display on the Four Queens Corner pursuant to development agreement.
Second.
Motion by Raffi, second by Bergen, council discussion. Hearing none, we'll go to roll call vote Carla.
Oh four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Raffi. Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Out of votes seven to zero, zero absent, resolution 20 dash 138 is approved. Item seven is resolution 20 dash 139. A resolution approving the allocation of Streetscape funds to pay the balance of a wall mural to be located at 214 East Bremer Avenue, Waverly. Motion, please.
I will move approval of resolution 20 dash 139 approving the allocation of Streetscape funds in the amount of $3,750 to pay the balance of a wall mural to be located at 214 East Bremer Avenue, Waverly.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Raffi, council discussion here.
It looks good. In the packet there. I was going to, uh, I gotta make a JPEG look on the internet so people can see it, but.
And it sounds like the artist is doing it at a lower cost, which is a very nice gesture on his part.
Yeah, I believe a similar mural would be two and a half times the amount he's charging us roughly for the size and the intricacy of it. So we're very fortunate Mr. Adala is doing this at that price and it does look great.
I can't wait to see plenty of senior pictures in front of this.
Hmm.
Future. And, uh, wedding photos, you name it. So.
This will help add to an eventual pocket park right there. We talked about putting in, although the mayor's talked about it at Iowa Falls. Other areas have them. We're excited to get this done and start getting some usage in there as a nice little side area away from, uh, downtown for people to enjoy. Just got to figure out the rest of how it's going to go.
All in due time. We're making progress though.
Only thing now I see a mismatch with the banners, but those will probably fade in a year or two, the rainbow banners. We could probably tie the banners, those colors in this together perhaps. Uh, or something that would maybe tie together better.
It should blend pretty well. All right. Hearing no more discussion, roll call Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Oh four.
Yes.
Out of votes seven to zero, zero absent, resolution 20 dash 139 is approved. Item eight is resolution 20 dash 140, a resolution accepting the crack cleaning and filling project 2020 as complete and approving pay estimate number one as the final pay request. Seek a motion to approve.
I'll move approval, I'll move approval of resolution 20 dash 140 accepting the crack cleaning and filling project 2020 as complete and approving pay estimate number one in the amount of $8,180.96 as the final pay request to Kluzner Construction of Farley, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Drinkow. Any council discussion here? Hearing none, go to roll call vote Carla.
Raffi.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Oh four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Out of votes seven to zero, zero absent, resolution 20 dash 140 is approved. Item number nine is resolution 20 dash 141, a resolution approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension 2021 Project. Seek a motion, please.
I'll move approval of resolution 20 dash 141 approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Mason City, Iowa for the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension 2021 Project, the not to exceed amount of $1,880.
Second.
Got a motion by Raffi, second by Kangas. Any discussion here? Hearing none, go forward with the roll call vote Carla.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Oh four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Out of votes seven to zero, zero absent, resolution 20 dash 141 is approved. Item 10 is resolution 20 dash 142. A resolution approving SRF sponsored water quality project application. Seek a motion, please.
I will.
Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, I'll move approval of resolution 20 dash 142 approving SRF sponsored water quality project application for a water resource restoration sponsored project located in Northwest Waverly.
I'll second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Glazer, council discussion. Maybe even possibly some introduction from James or somebody there.
Uh, this is a project we've been talking about recently. Uh, we're using the interest from our SRF fund, which is allowed for advancements, whether it be for water quality, um, nitrate reduction, et cetera. So this will encompass uh, the area up towards the northwest at the airport and it'll house about almost 500 acres of waterway and watershed that will then hopefully slow down any water flood issues that we've had in that area. The next item you'll see is to get the property as well to accomplish this from the owners who have agreed to work with us on this. And allow it to pool and dissipate instead of just rushing south as it has been. So we think this will be a good project overall, a good use of the funding, uh, that SRS is allowing us to do. Uh, this is not funding we have to pay back. They're granting this to us to do cer- certainly and uh, we're, we're just happy to be able to find a good use for it and a good project's going to help possibly with some flood issues in that part of town.
And for those out there not familiar with the acronym SRF, that's the State Revolving Fund.
Now, as I recall, when we were looking at these before, these were, um, for setting up some kind of wetlands to improve the water quality to kind of help get the nitrates out of the soil. Is this a water quality project or is this more of a kind of flood mitigation, avoiding kind of water running off to the dry run too quickly?
I think it would be a little bit of both, but I'll, it might kind of go forward with the detail on it, but it does have a wetland area that'll accomplish some of that, if you would, Mike. You're muted, by the way.
There we go.
There we go.
It, yes, it is primarily a nitrate nutrient reduction project. Uh, there will be some uh, flood mitigation benefit, but it is really geared towards water quality and wetland quality. So the intent is that, uh, I think they, they typically try to have about a foot and a half of water uh, in the wetland area. Uh, this is not, uh, going to be a deep reservoir. Uh, but again, it will be berms so that when we do have, uh, rain events, there will be uh, some storage capacity, but is, uh, really geared towards nitrate nutrient reduction.
Has there been discussion about concerns of having a bird habitat so close to an airport?
Yes. Um, I, I raised that, uh, item before and uh, what you need to look at is, I don't have the page number, but if you scroll down where you can see the airport and gives the acres, you'll see Izinnock Village is right next door and they also have, uh, a real nice pond. So um, this is, is only literally a few hundred feet away from, from Izinnock Village. So we don't really foresee it as uh, a major issue for the airport. We think it's a, a good location and a good, going to be a good project.
And Mike, do you have any idea of what, how much that property or the drainage from the farmland in that area contributes to our nitrate levels and, and what do you expect to see in a decrease after this project? And how long might that take to show up?
I, I don't have that type of information. Uh, so I, I can, uh, try to find that information, uh, for you and get back to you.
That'd be a great thing. When they came and gave the presentation, they talked about that a little bit, but I can't remember details.
I, I had one question here. Um, I'm, as I was reading through the, uh, the material. What is the actual city's outlay for this? I mean, what, what is going to be coming out of, uh, city, um, you know, real estate general, general obligation or, 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 or general budget? Uh, is it, is it just to pay for the recording costs? Or is there anything else that we're going to have to put into this project? Uh, the amount that SRF allows us to utilize a certain portion of what we've borrowed, the part of the interest is what this really is generated from, that should cover the whole of this cost from the property. from the property acquisition going forward. So I don't think there'll be much of any outlay from the city. That's kind of what they're wanting to do is have you utilize their source of funding, state revolving fund. And this is a side benefit you get to do then is a water quality project, which is kind of what they're really wanting to accomplish with these. And so I don't think there'll be much of any outlay from the city on this.
Okay, yeah, that, that was my understanding too from the discussions we had before, but I was having a hard time finding my way through the numbers on the um, um, in the pack and just wanted to make sure that that was the case, so.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Is there a well or a particular well closest to this um, project where we would see the impact of the nitrates?
I think through uh, sampling surface water. Uh, the previous project that we're looking at in eastern, uh, on the east side of Waverly, we were hoping to see a benefit in the groundwater. Uh, but these projects are primarily geared towards surface runoff, so uh, they're interested in what's being discharged to the river. And so if we can do nitrate nutrient reduction uh, before it gets to the river, that's their ultimate goal.
So this, this wouldn't be directly impacting any of the wells, but would mostly be just improving the overall water quality in the river?
One of the companion projects to this that they're going to look at, at funding is cover cropping uh, in the surrounding areas surrounding Waverly to the uh, the north and the northwest. So you think of the area that is inside the bypass. Um, it is something that we had addressed with them before that if we can uh, develop like a ten-year program with adjacent farmers to uh, develop a cover cropping program that we, we would hope to see a, a nitrate nutrient uh, benefit as well that may uh, provide uh, uh, an additional benefit to our groundwater system around well number eight.
Yeah, to echo what uh, Mike has shared with us is my experience with being on the Soil Water Conservation District is the goal, again, is the the, the groundwater, the, the surface groundwater is getting that uh, reduct- reduced down before it reaches the tributaries where once it gets to the river, there's no chance for it to um, be mitigated at that point in time. It's going all the way downstream, so um, these are some of the basic practices. There are others uh, there to uh, like Mike referred to as the cover crops, which assist with that too, so. All right, hearing no further discussion, we'll go with the roll call vote Carla.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Both four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero with zero absent resolution twenty dash one forty-two is approved. Item number eleven is resolution twenty dash one forty-three. A resolution approving the option to purchase real estate for the proposed SRF water resource restoration sponsored project located in Northwest Waverly.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty dash one forty-three, approving the option to purchase approximately eight acres of real estate from James P. Jansen and Sandra Jansen for the not to exceed amount of fifteen thousand per acre for a purchase price of approximately within with the city paying the closing costs for the proposed SRF water resource restoration sponsored project located in Northwest Waverly.
Second.
Motion by Glazer, second by Raffi, council discussion please. Obviously this marries up to the previous resolution. Obviously had to have the first one, had to have a purpose. Now we have the means. Hearing no discussion, we'll go to a roll call Carla.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Both four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero with zero absent resolution twenty dash one forty-three is approved. Item twelve was removed from the agenda. Is this an opportunity that you'd like to discuss that or add that on to staff comments, Mr. Browner?
Um, I think I'll just do a memo to council on this a little later on, let everybody know kind of where we're sitting and uh, that'll probably be sufficient. Thank you.
No problem. Moving to item thirteen on the agenda, resolution twenty dash one thirty-four, a resolution approving the street finance report for fiscal year night, twenty nineteen, twenty.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty dash one thirty-four, uh, approving the street finance report for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Motion by Drankow, second by Bergen, council discussion if any. Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Both four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero with zero absent resolution twenty dash one thirty-four is approved. Item number fourteen is revisit and potentially amend resolution twenty dash one twenty-six, a resolution requiring face masks be worn by any member of the public while being an occupant of a public building, city building that would be referring to. Open it up to any council discussion if, um, I would presume that if there's no opposition, it would stay the same in this matter.
Does this require a motion to discuss or to?
It's just a revisit at this point in time. If somebody wanted to make a motion to amend, formally amend it from what it is, we would entertain that, but if there's no.
But lacking a motion, it would just correct around for another month?
Right, exactly. But it still does, uh, basically would be a study session type item at this, at this level, just to um, you know, get any information from um, city administrator regarding um, any observations, uh, anything like that.
Well, I would say that the numbers of cases in Bremmer County are not going down. They are as high as they have ever been. They're have increased as compared to a month ago and that was higher than the month before, so I don't see that the need for such a um, ruling or a, a procedure has gone away.
We have any evidence to know that they're even effective?
That masks are effective?
Yeah. I mean, I did, I was looking for data on that. I haven't seen any yet.
Okay. I think that all of the um, scientific literature says that wearing masks is the best way to prevent passing on of the uh, coronavirus. Now again, it doesn't prevent you from getting sick, but it prevents you from getting other people sick. So it's a way to keep your um, germs from spreading to others. And the problem with this particular disease is that it's very likely to be asymptomatic, so that you're there's a very good chance that if you are sick, you would not know. The number of asymptomatic carriers is very high for this coronavirus.
I would say that um, a combination of washing your hands and not touching your face um, and being courteous to others around you um, by wearing a mask is probably the best way to prevent it, not just wearing a mask. Um, so making sure that uh, people are washing your hands um, and not touching your face is, is very big part of this as well, not just mask.
I absolutely agree.
I guess what I would like to know is, has there been any pushback from the public that have been uh, entering public buildings and been asked to wear a mask?
Uh, we've not really seen any at all. Uh, I thought there would be at one point here and there, but honestly, we've, we've not had much issue whatsoever. We've had a few people come in without them, because they're just going to be here a second, which is never just a second, but for the most part, everybody has complied. I think anywhere you go anymore, masks are required in private businesses, et cetera. So people I think are just used to the fact that they're going to be wearing them most of the time and our uh, businesses and organizations have already done it, so city buildings are really no different. And this has not been much of an issue at all that I've known.
As a state.
I, I would say that at Workburg where, you know, you've got eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-old kids who you would not expect them to be the most responsible individuals, they have uh, bought in pretty wholeheartedly to the mask-wearing uh, protocols and culture there. So I think that if it's something that everyone's doing, it's an easy thing for people to get used to.
Well, I don't think it's the time to abandon that policy. I, I think we need to continue it, so I, I don't believe that we need to be be making any changes at this point.
I was, uh, I shared the same concerns or sentiments that uh, city administrator did at first about uh, what type of pushback we may get from not many specific individuals, but just individuals i- i- in general. And I came to the consensus that if we could get through the first thirty days without any uh, significant issues. They always say it takes about uh, twenty-one days or so to break a habit or instill a new habit and we've made it you know, over a month since the last time we visited this, so it's becoming more commonplace. So uh, for those of you that heard me on K-Way, it's, it's kind of the premise that um, you know, the businesses have imposed um, to gain compliance if there isn't a statewide mandate, so that's where we're, we're sitting. So I take it this uh, item will um, remain uh, the resolution twenty dash one twenty-six will remain in place as is for right now.
When would uh, council like to review it again? I know we each cited each month in the first meeting, but because of the holiday, the first meeting October is only really just over three weeks away. Do you want to do it again that soon or do you want to extend it further out before you make another uh, discussion occur?
I would say for consistency, stick with the first scheduled council meeting of the month unless there's opposition to that.
Okay, that's.
I know it's a short one this time, but we extended the last time. We went five weeks or whatever without talking about it, so.
Doctor Fauci changing his tune every other month, so it could change next month.
It sure, surely could. All right, um, item J, reports from boards and commissions, uh, four here. Item one, Historic Preservation Commission minutes from June twenty-second, twenty twenty. Item two, Library Board minutes from July fourteenth, twenty twenty. Item three, Leisure Services Commission minutes from July sixteenth, twenty twenty. Item four is Civil Service minutes from August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, all received into the record. Any staff updates, City Administrator Browner?
Yes, sir. I think we have a few tonight. I know Garrett has a number of things he wants to run through and then I'll ask Mike to do a very brief update on our construction projects as well.
Thank you, sir.
If you would, Garrett.
Yep, thank you. Um, first thing that I have is uh, we were not able to stain the uh, rail trail bridge on Friday uh, due to the weather. So we are planning on doing that tomorrow and Wednesday. Uh, the bridge will not be closed during that time because we'll be able to, we're going to have smaller groups. Uh, so we'll be able to leave, you know, half of the bridge open, so people can still go across. Um, we are definitely still looking for volunteers though. So uh, if anyone wants to volunteer, we will be doing that tomorrow and Wednesday, eight o'clock until four o'clock. Uh, we'll have all the supplies that you need. You just need to show up. Um, I wanted to let everybody know that uh, the disc golf baskets are now in place. Uh, if you remember, would have been uh, the high-water event that we would have had, not this last uh, spring, but the spring before. Uh, we had a lot of ice come down the river and came through Brookwood Park. Uh, destroyed a lot of the uh, disc, disc golf baskets. Uh, so those are all uh, back now. Uh, we still need to get the cement pads in for the tee boxes, but the baskets are there. Uh, I was actually down there today and people were already using it, so they look great. Uh, the last thing I have is Saturday, September twenty-sixth. Uh, that will be the last day for the community gardens this season. Um, so we're looking for volunteers to help with the garden cleanup there. Uh, and actually this coming Saturday, the cleanup will probably start already. Uh, most of the vegetables are already harvested uh, and have been donated, so yeah, we can always use volunteers though uh, to help with uh, whatever we've got left and then of course the cleanup.
Okay, thank you, Garrett. Uh, Mike, if you would, give a brief update on the construction projects and a lot of them are finished, but any progress that we've had?
Well, let's start out with Fourth Street Southwest. This week they are finishing up with the water main, storm sewer work and box culvert. Next week they'll be starting to uh, do the finish grading and put the sub base down with intent of two weeks from now, in October five, uh, they should be setting up to start the paving operation. Tenth Street Southwest is now open to the public, uh, but not totally done. That opened up on September first. So there will be um, from time to time, you may still see some activity taking place on Tenth Street. Uh, same thing with Twentieth Street. On September fourth, we got open to the public. Uh, but it, it also is not totally finished, so uh, be mindful that you may see some uh, contractors out there again from time to time. Business two eighteen north, the asphalt overlay was uh, finished on September eleventh for the most part. Uh, they do have the permanent pavement markings that will be put down. Uh, what you see right now is temporary and they will come in and they will slightly grind the pavement where the uh, striping is going to be. That helps keep it below the elevation of your snowplow blades. Uh, should be longer lasting and more durable. Cedar River Park, uh, which is our youth ball fields. Uh, we're uh, hopefully going to be see that project uh, winding down in probably two to three weeks. Uh, we did have a tremendous amount of rain. Uh, it's nice to see that the stormwater management facilities are working. Uh, you do see them filled with water and they are pumping those out right now because the outlet structures have some filter fabric over them to keep the soil from uh, plugging them up. And that's why they are holding water uh, presently. When the project is done, uh, they will temporarily retain the water, but they will release it slowly over time and that is a, a feature of the stormwater management. So normally uh, those areas that you see ponding and holding water now would be dry. Um, another thing that's coming is fall starts next week, so that means our Public Works Fall Newsletter is going to be coming uh, delivered in the mail next week and that has a lot of good information on fall activities at Public Services.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Um, I think that's all we have this evening, sir.
Mike, can you tell us if everything goes as planned perfectly, when do we expect Fourth Southwest to be open?
Oh, Brian, that's such a loaded question. How can you guess that?
Well, as I'm saying perfectly, which means I know it's not going to happen, but I'm, I'm looking for the ideal.
Okay, so uh, we're still saying our, our target date is to have it open before Thanksgiving.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So on my screen here, I've got Mr. Bergen for council comments up first.
I've got nothing today.
All right, next to him is Ms. Raffi.
Nothing for me, thanks.
All right, next to her is Mr. Drankow.
Nothing for me this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Why, thank you. Mr. Schneider's up next.
Uh, I want to keep this really.
I want to keep this really short, but as long as we're doing these goofy Zoom meetings, I want to do show and tell from my house, so I'll just pick something different every time. We'll start with a book. This is a book that I think every city council person should read. It's The Death and Life of Great American Cities by Jane Jacobs. Because this meeting is pushed in two hours, I will not give a review of it, but it is a quote book to read to get in the mindset of looking at cities the way that customers do. And by customers, I mean residents or citizens, which brings me to my second point here. At this point, people have asked me, hey, what is it like to be on council? I don't want to answer that question, but what I've kind of looked at council people and councils across the country, and I think that what's lacking is just basic customer service skills in government, from politicians especially. And, you know, and I think that, and luckily, we're in a small enough community that nonsense is pretty minimal, but it, you know, it's still there, and we're going to try to beat it all the way back and all the way down. But it's real, this is really a customer service job, and we're here to serve the citizens. So this, and I say that because I think that we need more of those people to run for city office and get involved. And we need the people that are, you know, that are salespeople, that are, the people that sell cars and people that work customer service counters. I think those are, those would be great additions to city government.
All right, next up I have Mr. Glazer.
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
All right, next up, next to him is Ms. Wolfher.
I've got nothing tonight.
All right, I'll go to Mr. Kangas before we go to our guest.
I was just going to note that on August 30, the public golf course hosted the first annual Heritage Days Classic. And I don't know exactly how many groups were out there, but it was a nice turnout. It wasn't a full turnout. We didn't occupy all 18 holes to start, but we occupied at least nine, I know. And my group, I know, left a lot of birdies out there on the course to be had by others, all except for the one that my son hit on one tee shot. But it got up and hobbled away nicely.
Thank you. For the record, there are 52 golfers out there. That information is part of mine, but I'll give a recap on that. But I want to get to our guest first. Connie Miller, you have any comments you'd like to add this evening?
Yeah, just thanks for having me. It was very interesting and looking forward to the next one.
Excellent. We'll be more than happy to have you back for two more weeks. I had just a couple of things here. There was a letter that came in as a piece of public comment, or that was what its intent was, from Mr. Maven, that I just wanted to articulate that it had been received and passed on to council per his request. Earlier, or actually last month, I had the luxury of being hosted for a socially-distanced or physically-distanced tour of our golf course. I was, I'm not a golfer, so I felt that it was pretty important to go out and see our infrastructure, hear from our chair, Mr. Jones of the Golf Course Commission, and the vice chair, Mrs. Thorson, to kind of get a rundown on what is going on with the golf course, what, where it's come from, where it's going, kind of a needs assessment, that kind of thing. And I was pleasantly surprised with what we've got going on out there with our staff. So thank you to all those involved with that. Heritage Days fundraiser, again, like Mr. Kangas had mentioned, even though the band had some mechanical issues on the way and weren't able to attend, it was pretty well attended. Otherwise, as far as golfers for a first-time event in the burger bar, I was down there for that, and that was attended as well. Couple other things just to note here. We had a fairly large soccer tournament back on August 29, and I just took a quick drive through the parking lot through there and noticed, you know, a lot of local counties, but also saw a lot of Wisconsin plates. So we do have a draw for some of our facilities, even though they're not city-owned facilities. We are having that draw here for events, so that's a great thing to see. The Lions Club is going to have a go at a drive-through pancake breakfast this coming Sunday, September 20, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at the fairgrounds. So those of you that missed the spring edition at the fairgrounds, missed the, which they postponed. And then they did not have their Heritage Days one at the airport. But those of you that are really begging to have some of their pancakes, they'll get that opportunity in a drive-through, very, very limited contact process that they're going to set up. They do give a lot back to the community with the funds that they give. It's one of those organizations that gives out everything that they have come in in contribution. So it's a great organization amongst the many that we have to support. With that, I have nothing further and seek adjournment.
Moves it, we adjourn.
Motion by Kangas, second by Bergen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.